All right, yes, for the workshops, they will go to this side to discuss and really work on the comprehensive plan for Grand County. This document was bound in conjunction with the transportation plan. And we've gone through it, I read through it, ask Ryan to go through it as well. You all have plans to read. And I want to hear from you all, any comments, concerns, or whatnot that we can work on. To get this drafted out of your local planning committee, get back and get it to a point where it can be adopted. It is part of the transportation plan and the document that folks have stated federal levels are looking at for future developments in Grand County. Now, for that, I'll probably turn this over to Ryan, he's sort of going to facilitate this. Mr. Ryan Sheridan, Southwest Commission Region.
Thank you, Mr. Gable. So I thought we'd review the document, stop any time. I'm going to just give you a real brief kind of overview of that around. North Carolina General Statute 136, 66 dot 2 requires that the county adopt a local development plan, comprehensive plan, some type of guiding document before NCDOT will allocate resources to assist your community in producing a comprehensive transportation plan. Which you recall, you already adopted, the towns have adopted it, and it has gone to them for transportation, and they've adopted it. Well, traditionally, they like for you to do this first, but Grand County is the last county in the region to get a comprehensive transportation plan completed. At the same time, our federal partners, such as Federal Highways, NCDOT, the Appalachian Regional Commission, wanted the region to assist with the impasse around Fort Lorca. And so they came to the region, they met with local officials for the entire region, and said, "Wouldn't you all be willing to help us?" And we said, "Well, what do you need?" They said, "Well, we need you to do a regional visioning process to provide a foundation for the type of infrastructure you're going to be in the future." We agreed to do that, with some caveats, that we manage that locally, that we run the selection process locally, that we hire the consultants and guidance work locally. They were okay with all of those caveats, so we were provided the funding to hire the consultants to go through the opt-in process that may be you participate in now. Well, then they said, you know, "We also need to get Grand County CTP completed, the transportation plan, so can we add that to the consultant's list of duties?" Well, you also need a comp plan before you do the transportation plan. So they said, "Well, can we do all of these things at the same time?" You know, we acknowledged that it was going to be confusing, complicated in distinguishing, you know, among all the efforts, but we did it. So this is kind of the culmination of all that order. The opt-in, regional vision report was never meant to be adopted by a local entity because it takes the regional visions for each of the seven counties, and all the towns, and all the communities, and blends it into kind of a vision going forward for the region. And that's on our website, region8.org, it's on the opt-in SWNC copybook as well, if you want to review that final document. So today, that's some context, today we're talking about our comp plan, which is a little bit behind in the order of things, but it's still important because it provides a foundation for your transportation plan. Does all that make sense? Okay, we're good. So let's just jump into the plan, if that's okay, and just go through kind of the pieces of it. I made some comments, which I put in front of you, and I provided a press done attachment. Some of these comments are my personal opinions as a staff person to you all. This is ultimately your document, so you can hear my recommendation, and you can track it, and you can implement it, you can ask me to dig further, or agree to dig further. We just need a little bit of direction on resolving some areas that we deflag, knowing the community, knowing the elected officials at the table here, knowing you all. We just, we're making some basic recommendations, so let's just dig into it. The first section, the analysis, a lot of this is boilerplate kind of stuff. There's an introduction, there's a history section, and there's a summary of previous ones. I didn't find any issues with those first sections, it's pretty standard stuff. The next item, the next bullet, I'm just going through my bullets here now that I've got it here. And keep in mind that this is not a work plan for Grand County. This is kind of a wish list that the community has pushed up to you all. You can't implement all this, it would be impossible. If we put a dollar amount on implementing this, it could be over a billion dollars. This is kind of a vision for Grand County. So it's going to talk about, you know, increasing your commercial district's occupancy. It's going to talk about more housing. You know, the market's going to drop a lot of that stuff. You all can't use your magic wands or your magic gavel to make those things happen. There's going to be educational stuff in here, you're not going to take the deep down, chances are. Community college line, all the necessary facilities, so just keep all that in mind. I mean, you're not going to own all the recommendations in here, just like we as an organization don't own all the recommendations in the opt-in plan. There's items in there that the university needs to work on, that the Department of Social Services needs to work on, that are completely outside our purview. Same goes for your plan, there's a lot here. But if there's something in here that you think is the wrong direction for the county, then you need to be vocal about it, because this is kind of like the high-level blueprint for the county. Now, I deal with this in a lot of communities. This board has the authority, the towns have the authority as a policy board. It would be real hard to implement any of this without going through it through law because you are the final decision makers. So even if you endorse this, adopt this here in a couple of weeks, or whatever term you want to use to affirm it, just keep that in the back of your mind, it's a long-range vision document. And obviously, it would be a monumental task to implement it all. But there's some pieces in here that are probably doable. So, back to the bullets, forgot to do that. You can learn this anywhere about these types of documents. Land stewardship and ownership is the next section. And there's some errors, a lot of fine partiers are not accurately correctly. So there's a lot of TDA land identified along the south shore of Lake Montana, that's all US Forest Service land. So we'll make those kinds of corrections, those types of corrections that they call. Next, the community facilities, the volunteer fire departments, and the comments that I'm going over are... The comments that I'm addressing are a combination of Greg's review and my review combined. Just areas that we have found, you know, shortcomings or mistakes. So they don't have all the volunteer fire departments, so we'll resolve that. Four healthcare facilities in the county, such as two, we'll resolve those comments. Infrastructure, there's an infrastructure map in there, it's of the county as a whole, it's hard to read. You can't see the infrastructure again in three towns, so we'll create inset maps so you can see the infrastructure. I know that we can't always provide very detailed line item, or line maps for infrastructure due to Homeland Security issues, and making infrastructure assets available to the public, but we can, maybe we can find a way to highlight parcels that have access to those infrastructure assets, because we want this to be useful for you and your economic development efforts also. So we'll find a creative way to do that. The next, nature, health, and culture section. There's quite a bit in here about significant natural heritage areas. I'm a little bit familiar with these types of data sets. The state, North Garden Park of Natural Resources occasionally goes out and does surveys. They'll do surveys for private landowners, they'll do surveys for forest projects. The last survey I could find in Grand County was an Appalachian Trail Foreland survey from 1991 and 1992. I don't know how old the survey is for Grand County, it probably predates that. So I contacted them today, because I questioned why that's in your comprehensive plan if we're not really certain how valid that data is, or about accurate, or how up-to-date it is. So I was told that they are out surveying Grand County right now, the Natural Heritage Program is. I don't know where they're at, or what they're doing, or what lands they're on, but I just have concern with including that. And any data source that we're not real clear on, whether it's accurate or up-to-date, I don't think should be in your document, especially if it's just kind of fluff to the document. I mean, we should just, we should focus on the core pieces of what's in this document. My recommendation would be to strike that section out, and you all can consider that and provide direction on that as I prepare work break, everything's ready up. Does that make sense to you all? Okay? And I'll follow up if I get any additional information on that survey. If there's a draft available, I think we'd love to get our hands on it and see what it says, because I think that can have an impact on the county at some point. And I'm not quite sure whether those heritage areas are all on local lands. And I think it would get you all in trouble if you start identifying special areas that are on private lands. I don't think it's a role for you all to play, so unless you disagree with the board. So I see people nod their heads, so we'll go ahead and fix that section.
We did the same thing in the transportation plan with this similar, similar map, we basically made a statement when we're not endorsing that because we had no significant evidence to say that it was valid.
Yeah. The next item, you know, kind of falls in that same category, it's the environmental hazard section. It talks about development on steep slopes, and the danger in that. I would prefer that it say, that it talk about the cost to develop on steeper slopes, because it can be done safely with proper engineering. So, you know, I don't think that's up for the consultant prepared document to, to make statements about or support. So, you know, there's potential, city rock, I mean, a whole northern two-thirds of the county, potential. I'm real comfortable with the word potential, that's a big unknown, so I would recommend that we strike that out. This plan is focused on growing your community, growing your economy, life, health, for your residences, for your residents. You as a county are not going to deal all of that with the city rock. DOD moves forward with road projects, they have to settle all that stuff, it's required by federal law. So I would recommend that that also be taken out of the plan, which it was taken. There were some conflicting maps in the comprehensive transportation plan, and I believe you all saw it.
The border map right here actually came out of transportation plan.
So I think the recommendation is to strike that out. All right, the next, there's a heritage section, it talks a lot about your historic sites, which I think is great, that could be a good tourism asset. There's also quite a bit to talk about Cherokee Trails. I guess Wild South has done some mapping in the county, along with perhaps the Cherokee Preservation Foundation. They're typically one of the funnest types of projects. I think that could be a cultural tourism asset as well, so I don't know how much of that you want in the plan. I think that tourism, cultural tourism, heritage tourism will be an area that you all capitalize on in the future, or in now. So I'd be fine to leave some of that in the plan, but kind of do some direction to comment on too. A lot of those old trails that they've identified as historic Cherokee Trails, but no longer, no longer used as trails, a lot of them are burned now because they typically follow the path of least resistance, and that's what groups will build subsequently, so. Yeah, it's a lot of historical. So I think, you know, identifying the historic features, like, you know, courthouses, old buildings, old centers, I think that kind of stuff is very into your company, I think it makes sense to kind of lead on you all for how much of your, you know, do you want Cherokee Trails and stuff like that in the library plan? It's harmless, I think, by putting in there because they've been mapped, they're, you know, the entity that has mapped them has that information, and they present that information. You are forming or adopting this plan, you're not validating that, or agreeing, yes, those were ancient Indian trails. They're just part of your.
They are, they are.
Map features. The next section, demographics, this is standard boilerplate kind of stuff. You know, data that we hear about all the time, income, rate, stage, housing units, all that kind of stuff. It's hard to mess that stuff, I think that whole section's fine. There is a section on Stanley Furniture on page 28 that needs to be updated because that is fairly outdated now.
Can I point out to you that we can update those?
The demographic data typically lags quite a bit, so a lot of that data is going to be 2010 data because it comes out every 10 years, but there are some sections that, yeah, like that Stanley Furniture piece definitely needs to be updated. But like the median income, the wage information, that stuff was from the American Community Survey in 2011. That's probably the most recent data that we have. But I'll look through the other data pieces, and if I can't refresh it in certain areas, I'll definitely do it. The next section, employment, I think we can update that with more recent numbers as well. The retail section, I wanted to spend just a minute on this because it took me forever to figure out retail leakage, which I think would be a value for you all if you don't understand it already, to understand it. On page 34, when they talk about retail leakage issue, what they're talking about is, you have ExxonMines stores in Grand County, let's say that generate $10 million worth of dollars in the whole county. Well, if your resident's purchasing power is $12 million, then there's $2 million being spent outside the county. Maybe in Cherokee County, maybe in Swinney County. That's considered leakage, that's where your residents are spending money outside of your county. So when they talk about retail opportunity, clothing opportunity for retail, that's what they're talking about. And they can, there's some data that's pretty savvy on tracking some of that stuff, although it's a little bit speculative, based on averages, based on consumer spending habits. But you can kind of see the areas. On that chart, if it's in red, it means you're, it means people are coming to your county instead. So you're actually gaining in retail. If the number is in black under the demand column, it means they're going outside the county instead. So it just shows that, you know, from an economic development and recruitment perspective, arms, you know, Andy Cable put a little bit of data perhaps, we need to try and pitch the county their potential retail plans. That's what I think it's about, which is in a nutshell. All right, the next section. Okay. The next section, there's a little bit of transportation analysis. This is not getting into our corporate recommendations yet about transportation. I would just caution, you know, when we make statements in there, like, "The roads are operating well", that's from a capacity perspective, and that's relative. That's not from a, what do you call it, where your roads are stable, and you can depend on them from storms. It's not, it's not from that perspective. So when we make a statement that they're operating well, I think we just need to be clear about what we're talking about when we say they're operating well. Because Grand County does not have a lot of development seen in their road network, I guess you all know that. When you have a slide, it tends to crush y'all from key commerce areas, so we can clean up that one to make sure we're articulating what we're saying. The next section is community input, which starts on page 43. There were interviews to start with, and this is the opt-in process, so a lot of interviews. They interviewed key people, key leaders, most people were watching you. And then they probably asked you, "Who else should we talk to in the county? Who else has been around for a while, who's a leadership chair, who's engaged in the community, who's providing the leadership role?" Those, that's how the interviews kind of unfolded. But there were also small group meetings, and a group requested a meeting they were met with, a couple of community workshops, the week-long workshop leading to an open house, which resulted in this draft plan. So quite a bit of community input went into this plan, along with the steering committee, which I believe was eighteen initially, although I think several of those folks are no longer in the community, or have gone. But, you know, they guided the work, but it's ultimately up to you all to kind of polish it and adopt it. That's what you're likely to do. So, the work's valuable in getting you this document, but it's really up to you all to kind of get that recognition and make those final remarks. So on to the recommendations portion, which starts on page 47. So there's an investment guide in here, which we can jump to, which is a map. Now, the investment guide, first of all, is not mandated, because there is no cannibalism in Grand County. So this simply shows areas where the data suggests would be prime for development. And so they're looking at proximity to infrastructure, they're looking for level, more leveling land, plus transportation, water, et cetera. And so you'll see in the map, areas in Sacoa Valley, along the Sweetwater area, Robbinsville area, Jacantila area, Fontana Village area, were all areas that were highlighted as prime growth areas. So those are all, that's what the investment guide says. But there is no policy attached that says Grand County will be developed in these areas. But as you move forward with looking at countywide policies for extending the infrastructure as a county, you can take this under consideration. And, you know, if you're extending, most of the time you're going to be extending the infrastructure in these investment areas, because it's an area that makes sense to develop. It's the areas that are going to cost effectively to develop. So that's, that's what that investment guide's about. We've gone to the second page to my handout. That's a statement I already covered, and you can spearhead all of those recommendations, but, I mean, there's a lot of stuff in here about, you know, preserving historic buildings, preserving farmland, but there's not a way to preserve farmland, because if somebody owns farmland, they could sell it for development tomorrow. There are some ways in the county that pass policies whereby you can lower tax rates for those types of activities to kind of incentivize something, but that's really the worst. You're ongoing to part of the zone, which none of us can. So all those, all these recommendations are great, but in reality, of making them happen, that's going to be complicated, it's going to be difficult to make something happen. So there's a, there's a lot of recommendations. There's conceptual plans for the riding wheel bypass. There's greater Robbinsville conceptual plans. It has to do with streetscaping, sidewalks, encouraging residential development in town, et cetera. But really, you know, the market's going to drive decisions. So there's, there's a pretty heavy transportation section in there. And since you all have adopted the transportation plan, what I'd like to do is go back and pull the information from the transportation plan and drop it in here. Because you've already adopted that document, that's already in, everybody's on board with the transportation plan. So we'll just substitute a lot of that and trim out some of the extras, and set that back to you. And, you know, I'm not going to read through every recommendation. I'll cherry pick a couple. Work with NCDOT to open to legal law for full park access and explore opportunities for recreation and education. Great idea, that huge natural asset uphill that might be able to be turned into, you know, an iconic asset. A lot of those are experience. So there's a lot of that kind of stuff in Grand County. A lot of good ideas, it just takes, takes leadership, or somebody in the community that's willing to take that project down and spearhead it, or the board to take it down, and a lot of times it takes one. You're going to develop that area, you're going to have to have parking, you're going to have to have, you know, some control of traffic, pedestrian traffic, probably foot bridges, it's expensive to develop these sites. You know, this is a smorgasbord again, of opportunities you all have. What I would recommend is in some future work session, you may be picking a year that you'd like to focus on next year, that you all agree upon, that would be good to take on. I think that would be great utilization. In the implementation guide, similar to the opt-in guide, there's a big matrix, and it talks about the timeline for that particular item, the estimated cost. I see one for 3.5 million, I see 750,000, a $3 million one, a $2.5 million one, $50,000 one. A lot of these are expensive, but a lot of them just take administrative time. So targeting year-round businesses, expanding cell phone coverage, those are great ideas. They're a little bit easier said than done, as we all know. It's tough to secure infrastructure dollars when your populations are dispersed. A lot of the, there's a lot of, I guess, acronyms, ARC, CCG, over here on this side. If you go to the last page, there's a key to help out a lot who all of us are. I made a couple notes on your second page, DCA, which you can call Division of Community Assistance, but now called Economic Development and Planning Unit. That's part of the North Carolina Department of Commerce. So I'll update those acronyms because those things have changed. Advantage West, AW, you'll see that a lot in this document, they're closing the doors this fall, so we'll update that as well. And CEC is the Certified Executive Royal Communities Program. That program no longer exists, and Advantage West spearheaded that, and they're going to make it. So we'll, we'll update that when you're not, and so it's a more useful document. So that's kind of how your plan is structured. Got a little bit of direction from you all, I think I can continue to work with Greg on areas. I think the biggest area is aligning into the transportation plan, which we can do as quickly as we can. I'll try to turn that along with the next week, and get that draft back out to you for your review. If you want to hold off, I can hold document, I can make these changes that I talked about today, from concept to Greg, submit your transportation plan components, and send it back out to you, and then really focus on that. Last bullets on the two pages that I handed out to you. I don't know what level of engagement you want back with the comp planning committee that's open. That's open for discussion. They presented the draft to you all. You all are going to edit the draft some with some of the changes that you made, especially the policy decisions you made, such as the document received to be integrated that. So you have a couple of options. Greg and I can put that in front of your complaining committee again, and we sit down with them, like we're sitting down with you, and say, here are the changes that we made at the last commission board meeting, and get their feedback on it. And then I can bring that back to you all at your next work session. And I think it'll be pretty wrapped up by then. And then you could schedule for it to be on maybe your September first...
I have a second question?
September 1st agenda, to consider it for adoption or endorsement or whatever term you want, used to set that one. So any further direction or any questions about the process or how we arrived here or the value of it or what it means, I'd be happy to try to answer any of those questions.
No, I think it's a good idea. There was a number of committee, and then you had that discussion with the committee, what changes that we discuss here, you know, the state would need to do, and then bring that in.
And I believe you're having another work session prior to your...
I think it's a very short one. But we can have that, you and I can together work on this, and then we can present those changes in that if you all want to have some discussion in it again. We should...
You said there's lots of support in the area between the agencies that are in trouble. It's kind of the other agencies are not taking the ball and all this stuff at this point. They don't necessarily get trouble. Is there other... Is there ways in other places that you say that we can help agencies as they are comped up and ensure that they are doing their part and trying to break some of these challenges?
Sure. You know, I love the idea of, like, dashboards. That's a pretty common term, performance dashboards. So, you know, this plan is roughly out in five or six sections, so you could track, perhaps on an annual basis, because a lot of this stuff's going to take time, what percent you are complete in each of those broader categories. You can put that on your county website. It's, you know, right now, everything's zero percent complete, although some things are under way. And then you could do an annual overview at a board meeting and talk about the areas that you've made progress on. And you could, you know, you could update that dashboard so the public, you know, can see that you're making progress on those items. I think that's one way to kind of communicate that you're making progress. Keeps it on people's minds. It engages your... Because your health department will play a critical role in helping implement this plan. Because healthy communities are a big portion of this, educating the public about health, et cetera. So it's going to take... It's going to take a lot of leadership, I think, also, to ensure this is implemented. But, you know, communicate that you're working toward what we need to accomplish. We, as an organization, are trying to do that more too, where we, you know, we do a plan, we update it every five years, but how do we communicate to the public that we're making progress on that in years two, three, four, five? And we're going to... We're working on that too, so if you all want to explore how to do that, we're going
Are there any other specific concerns that you all had in the plan that you saw that you would like for us to address specifically? Okay. Want to make sure we covered everything.
If you have any of you... If you start reading on the current version and you see something that you want, and from the break line, please shoot us a quick email. We'll get that changed, and we'll do that in the next draft. I'll try to turn around the draft with Greg in the next week or so, so maybe by the end of the next week, we'll get a more polished draft back into your hands.
Ready for discussion?
Yeah, I think so.
We have now any time to discuss with us or...
That's right. You too. You did a good work on that. I appreciate it.